Okay, good morning, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our study session here. What we're gonna do now is, we're just gonna go over last night's hand, where I finished 3rd in the $55, $10,000 guarantee. We're gonna take a look, I talked with my coach here, a little bit about this hand. And I had King 10 on the small, on the big blind. There's 3 players left. So there's some big money jumps here, ICM considerations. So, I did take this, this hand and put it into ICMizer. It did suggest a fold or shove here, so the, but the small blind raises here, Yagati raises. ICMizer suggested a fold or shove. My coach said it's okay to play this hand because I had approximately 28 big blinds left, I don't know if we can put this in big blind mode or not. I guess not, but I have about 28 big blinds here, it doesn't show. It shows it in money here. So, it's okay to call here with this hand, so that's what I did, I called. And we go to a flop. And 8-8 deuce. So, I believe I checked here. Oh, he checked, and I checked it back. Which I think was the right play here, to check it back. And then I catch the king. Also, one of the things my coach pointed out was that I did have, I do have the flush blocker, one flush blocker for the spades that are out there, and a flush blocker for the hearts that are out there, so I pick up the king on the turn. And the small blind goes, he goes ahead and bets. Thirty-two thousand. At this point, this is where the, where I started making mistakes. I min-raised here, and my coach gave me hell about this. It's either, better would have been just a call here, or just shove it at this point. But I went ahead and did a min-raise, which was the mistake. And then, of course, he shoves it all in, so. You know, it looks like pretty much that this was all, this was, now I need to reevaluate here, and if I'd have just called, then the next card that came, in reality, any, anything that came, I was gonna end up stacking off with this hand. Because the next card was a 10, but regardless of this, if I would have just called here, his raise, if I would have just called, this was the best play, the best EV play was just a call. Instead of min-raise. So you, if you're gonna min-raise, I should have just shoved it at this point. So that was a mistake, so I did the min-raise, and then he shoved on me, and I called. Of course, I have the king. And I shoved here, and he has an 8. Unfortunate, but he had the 8. Even if I just would have called here, the money would have been going in, because you know, on the, on the river you got a 10, and I probably would have just put it all in at that point as well, so. You know, ICMizer said that King 10 off here was either a shove or a fold. So, depends, you know, you have to take into consideration, are you a good post-flop player? Or is you better off just shoving at this point with ICM, so. You know, anyway, that's what I'm trying to improve, is my post-flop play. And hence, that's where we're going to now. So, I'm starting a new trend here, and the trend is to oh hey Jay, thanks, I'm just doing a study session. I didn't even hear that, normally I can hear when you come in into the chat, I gotta turn that volume up on that. So, basically, what I'm starting to do now is do a study session before I jump into some tournaments, and that is the DTO poker trainer. So far, so this, let me, let me see if I can tone this music down, give me a second here. I just gotta get connected here, my other devices here. One second, and then we'll get, we'll get started here. Alright, I wanna get some, I gotta get some classical music stream for when we're doing the study session, because this is just, this music's a little bit too. This is more for action here, so give me a second, let me just get this fixed up. Alright, so, let's put on some jazz, let's do some piano.
The music you want, when you want it.
Okay. And if that's too loud, it seems a little bit loud, let me just turn it down a bit. So we'll get that turned down there, that's a little bit better, just a little background music. Okay, so, let's start out, let's, let's play some hands here, this is a study session, so. I'm gonna just be going through hands, and whoever wants to join and check it out, you know, you can, you can give me some feedback. If not, I'm just, this is just gonna be my new kind of, what you could say, drills before I start playing. So, in this particular situation, let's check it out, let's see, we got I got pocket sixes, so preflop, the user. I raised. And a small blind raised me, and I called, so this is where we're at right now, so. Okay, so. And the small blind leads out 4.4, and I think definitely in this position, it is a call. So I'm gonna call here, I mean, what I'm doing here is looking at, so we have 30 big blinds, I'm just kinda playing this like, you know, like I'd play it in a tournament, just natural and see, and then this thing will tell me how I did, so, I'm gonna call. And the king comes out, and he's all in. So. I have pocket sixes. It's most likely here that he's gonna show up with ace-king or king-queen. So, at this point, I'm open-ended, and in a tournament, I would probably just fold here, but I don't know if that's the correct play. So, I'm gonna do fold, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna throw up a warning. So let's see. Yeah, it's a blunder, okay. So I figured it was gonna do that, but that's the way I play in a tournament, so. By doing this, what I'm trying to do is figure out what I can change about how I play. So let's retry it. And we're gonna try some different lines here, so probably just calling the, it's like, uh, call here. Maybe, maybe I should raise here, maybe it'd be better if I raised, because I am open-ended. And, so let's try that. No, that's inaccurate as well, okay, so let's try this again. Alright, so, calling was, was okay. I could also shove here. Let's just see what happens when I shove. Okay, oh wow, that's the best play. Oh, we both had pocket sixes, you can see up here. Very interesting, so the best EV play is to shove in this spot. Okay, let's go on to the next one, that's, you get, you got an overpair, and you're open-ended, it makes sense, it's making sense, rather than just calling. Not knowing where you're at after that, you can see, yeah, it's, it's, this program is fascinating. Okay, so let's go on to the next hand here, so the preflop. Preflop, hey, Mr. Wagner 22, didn't expect that, I was thinking the best was fold, oh cool. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's interesting when you see these spots in this thing, it's, it gives you a new perspective, and that's why I'm doing this, I'm trying to trying to improve my post, or pre, you know, post-flop, or my betting, you know, post-flop play. Because I think that's where my weakest spot, weaknesses is, is post-flop play. So, okay, so this hand, we've got see, the user, so I raised. And big blind called. And I hit a set. Okay, so. And checks to me, so I'm gonna bet, I think betting big here is, is good, you have a set, you wanna try to get all the money in, so I'm gonna bet. And he folds, okay, that says it's good, maybe that wasn't the best play, so let's go back and retry, maybe betting smaller there is better. Alright, so, let me just bet small, I also could check here, but let's try a small bet. Okay, oh, okay, so a small bet there was, was better EV than, than a bigger bet. Okay, alright, let's, let's hit the next one. Alright, so, rope, let's see what's happening here, I raised from the cutoff. And DTO 3-bet me. And I just called here, so, we've got, we got a flush draw. We've, we're open-ended, we got a lot going on here, so. I think right here it'd be best, we could bet, but I, I think maybe checking here is best, and then if he bets, we're just gonna put it all in, so let's check. Oh, he checks back. That's not good, okay. Alright, uh, yeah, no, I'm not sure what to do, if that was the best line, I think we'll just check again. Okay, so now I think we, on the turn, it would just be best to call here. And we don't hit, we brick it, so now, what do we do, we're he, remember, shoot, excuse me guys. I have a call coming in. I just gotta mute you for a second here. Okay, sorry about that, I had to take that phone call. So right now, we can't win the hand unless we bet. And, let's see, just remember what he did here. Mr. Wagner 22, no problem, okay. Let's, so. This is a situation, because normally I would just, I would just check and give up here. But he did, let's see, he did check, didn't he check the, the turn here, so we got the flop. He checked, so he checked, he checked the which is interesting, he checked, so we expect maybe he has maybe he has ace, no, we have a blocker for ace-jack, what is he raising? Pocket tens, maybe? Pocket tens, pocket jacks? Is he gonna, no, not pocket jacks, not pocket tens, maybe he's got pocket nines here? Because we have a blocker for the ten, we have a blocker for the jack. Pocket eights possibly as well? Uh, let's check, let's, let's take a look at his possible ranges here. So tens, jacks, but jacks, you know, we have a blocker for the jacks, we have a blocker for the tens, it's saying eights and nines not as range, sevens or sixes could be a possibility as well. I'm not sure what this .1 stuff is yet, I haven't figured that out. So, in order to, to, if take this down, I mean, he, he could have, if he had pocket sixes here, he's got, he's got a full house. So, I mean, normally I would just check and give up. But so far, every time I'm using this thing, it's like it seems like you're supposed to do something here, and I, and I don't think going all in, but maybe just a bet here, I mean, if we risk 5.4 blinds, if he shoves on us, then we just fold, but we risk a reward, reward ratio here, maybe that's what's taken into account. I mean, personally, I would check. But I'm, I'm trying to think about what's happened, and what I've seen in this, I'm, I'm just gonna check, and not I don't know, I don't know what to do in this spot, and normally I would just check here, so I'm just gonna bet, I'm gonna bet, you know, just to mess around and see what happens here. Uh, yeah, okay, so now we would just fold. And, oh wow, okay, that was the best play, the best play was to actually bet there to try to win the pot, and then when you get raised like that, you just fold it. So, normally, what I would do is just, is just, like I said, just check there and give up. So it's better, you know, to get to, you know, mess around doing it like, or not mess around, but to, to try to win the pot. I'm still in the tournament, so that's not, you know, it's not gonna it's not gonna hurt me too bad, I mean, you know, I lose 5 big blinds, 5.4 big blinds, but I had a chance of taking down the pot. Alright, let's go on to the next one here. Alright, so we got ace-7 suited, and we do hit the 7, so let's look at the preflop action, I raised, and the big blind called. Okay, we got 28 big blinds, and this thing is just set up so we're about even in blinds here, and, and again, it's just to try to, to improve my post-flop play. So I hit the 7, so I think a small bet here is good. And the flush, flush draw there, so I do a small bet. Okay, so he's gonna call, so yeah, that's not a good turn card for us, so. I think now the best thing to do is to check it back. And we're just gonna check it down, I think, is the best play here, let's see. Okay, excellent, we did that one right, perfect, let me let's give a win on this one. Let me move this up here. Alright. Give me a second here, I just gotta get my little my little buttons all set up here so that we can get alright, there we go, alright, so let's let's go to the next one. So we have 10-8. Preflop play was DTO from the cutoff raise. Oh, I raised with 10-8, I mean, this is not me, but this is the way it was set up, so, I'm playing from this position where DTO raised and then I raised, I 3-bet, this doesn't make any sense, 3-betting with 10-8. And DTO called. Okay, well. Yeah, this is weird, so he's in the cutoff, oh, I'm in the big blind, okay, so I 3-bet from the big blind. I 3-bet the cutoff open, because the cutoff open is usually quite wide, so. Interesting, okay, so. So because I 3-bet here, you know, I kinda have the, you know, I can rep different hands, so. At this point, I think, I think betting 3.3 here, because I 3-bet in this position, so let's do that. No, it's interaccuracy, so, alright, so let's let's go back, and so the proper move here would be a check, so we're gonna check it. And then we're gonna call. Sure that's the correct play. And we'll check it back. And I think I think here is still pretty small, though. I don't know. I don't know, we don't have much, we don't increase, increase our equity here with the 4, I mean, if I was playing a tournament right now, I would just fold. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what I'd normally do, what I, what I feel like I would do, I'm gonna fold this. Okay, perfect, let's move on to the next one. So let's give ourselves a win there.
Nice.
Alright, so pocket 3s here, and preflop action was DTO raised. So DTO raised from the high jack. And I just called from the small blind. And I'm gonna check here. And I think I'm gonna call, actually. Make sure on your small pairs if you're supposed to call here. It really gives you difficult situations, I'm also in doubt of what I would do, yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely tough, Mr. Wagner 22, for sure. So, here, I've noticed a trend or a pattern that you've, with these, this kind of flop. I think this one's a call, but in similar flops I've seen, maybe not a paired board like this. The smaller pairs usually end up being a fold, but I'm gonna call here. Because, I mean, he has a lot here of different hands, so. It looks like, and then I'm gonna check it back. Okay, so he does check back, so that's interesting, okay, now we got counterfeited, so this is a spot, this is similar to similar to a spot the last time, so. When he bets small here, it's possible that he could have the queen. So, the reason he bet small was he had a queen, it's definitely, the queen's definitely in his range. He's got a lot of queens here, king-queen. Let's see what else he's got, queen-wise, oh, he's got, he's, you know, this is in his range, the, the queen nines, queen to eights. Queen tens, queen-jack. So I'm not sure here if we can try to win the pot. The only thing we could do if we check this and he bets and come over the top is a bluff. Because right now we can't win the, we can't win the hand. But I was in this position on DTO Trainer. A similar one, where I got counterfeited, I had pocket sixes, and I put in a big bet, but I think I was in position then, and this one's different because I'm not in position. So I don't really know what to do here. We could, like, test, like, maybe a small bet here? Like, like we're trying to do a very thin value bet? Now, the hand that I was in before would like, the same similar situation where I was counterfeited with pocket sixes, I did a big bet here, so, I don't know, maybe I just can't, I, I don't know, it, he did it's, this is a tough call, I'm, I'm not sure if anybody has any suggestions. I normally, in a tournament, my play would be to just to fold here, so, but what I'm trying to do is figure out, okay, what can I do in this, in this spot, I mean, because that last time I was counterfeited, I actually, you know, if I would have, you know, it was suggesting that I do a different play, rather than just checking, give up here, so. I don't I'm not sure, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna guess, I'm, I'm gonna follow based on what I, but the problem is, is I'm, I'm out of position here, I don't know what this guy got, what he's got, I mean, he could, that queen could have just made his hand right there. No, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try what I learned the other day, which is, do half-pot, if, if he, he comes over the top or calls us, we're still in the tournament. So we're gonna 23, we're gonna do an over-pot bet here, and see if we can get him to fold. And see if this is the correct play, so, let's see what happens. Oh, oh, wow. Okay, alright, so this is the second time I've seen a position like this, where the board pairs and there's very little action in the game. In, in the betting, and you get counterfeited, and so doing, not necessarily shoving here, because, you know, if he does have the queen, you're dead, but he folded jacks in this case. So, so by putting in that big bet, so it was indication that he had something, you know, that, because he was a little bit weak, because he, he, he he did a small bet, and I called the small bet, and he checked the turn. So that's an indication that he's a little bit nervous about the aces and the queens. So I guess in that, in this sense, it's best, you know, when you're counterfeited like this with a pocket pair, and, is to go for it, and you notice I didn't just like, put it all in. If I were to get called or shoved, shoved on, I could just fold, and I'd still have half my stack left, so I think that's the lesson to take from this situation, because this is the second time I've seen it, so let's go to the next one here. Alright, so, we have a preflop. Preflop, I raised from the low jack, and from the small blind DTO calls. So let's, let's take a look at his range here, what's he calling with deuces, threes, sixes, all, all the, all the pockets, tens, jacks, queens, that's definitely probably a 3-bet in this case. And that didn't happen, so we can take those out of his range. But you can see all the suited connectors are in there. You know, all these suited kings to king-four, all the suited aces are there. The, you know, suit, offsuit aces from ace-nine and up. Ace-king, they definitely would have 3-bet here, so we don't have to worry about that, king-queen, king-jack, off. All this stuff here, queen-ten, queens, they got a lot of, a lot of stuff going on here, so let's so he definitely has a lot in that range, so, and of course, we, we hit the king, so. And we, he checks, and then, so it's our turn to bet, so. I'm thinking a bet on the larger side here. To protect us if there's any, you know, straight draws out there. So let's, let's bet 4.5 and see what, what, what we get. Okay, alright, we get a fold, as, perfect, alright, so, larger side works good. Alright, let's continue on this. Alright, so, we are in the big blind, and DTO checks, so this is a, you know, small blind checks, and I check back, and this is the flop. And he checks to me, so I personally think right here, if I was playing a tournament, I would just check, so I'm gonna check. And, you know, we hit a 10, comes out, doesn't really change anything. And he bets 1, so I think I'll just call. And we do end up hitting a 6 here, but the flush comes in as well. So he checks back, and I think at this point, it's just best to check back, and we'll just check back and see what happens. Okay, perfect, we got that one right too, wow, doing pretty good. Alright, so let's continue here. Alright, so the preflop action was raised from the high jack. And I called on the button. And he checks to me, and I think a check back is appropriate here. And a check, and I think we just check, check back. Oh, inaccuracy, interesting, okay, so let's retry this. Okay, alright, so. Checks, I'm gonna check it back. And then the 9 comes and he checks again, so now, maybe the idea here is to put in a small bet. Should take a little small bet here. And we get the fold, okay, it's, this says good. So I don't wanna have good here, this is, I'm looking for excellence, so I'm gonna retry this again, so I think maybe a bet here from imposition, when you get checked to, is maybe a small bet here would be better? And we get a fold, that's, that's the key, okay, so these small bets are quite amazing. I see that a lot in this program, and I'm also, I see it at the tables as well in the tournaments. Little tiny bet when you're in position, see if you can take it down, makes sense, alright, let's continue. Alright, so we got 2 pair here, now small blind checks, so the, I raised and small blind called. So I liked this one here, I definitely think that playing this fast is good. 18 big blinds here. I think you could bet here, I know that this is what I would do in a tournament, I bet, I just bet 3, sometimes I'd bet pot here, but I don't have that option here. And betting small, I, I just don't think betting small here is good. I actually think just shoving here, well, I, I think that's a little too strong. But I, I, I think to me, this feels like the best decision. But this one could be, I'm leaning towards here and here, but I'm gonna go with this and see what happens. Mistake, alright, it's probably a shove, so let's go back. Okay, so. Okay, so I'll go with my second choice, and that's all in. That's a mistake as well. Just a small bet here? Really? Maybe, is it just a small bet? No? It's checking, wow. Wow, wow, wow. Wow, interesting, so I'm supposed to check here? Because normally I play 2 pairs like, fast, you know, because there's always something, I mean, I lose so many times with 2 pairs, but this is interesting, I okay, let's see what happens here, we check it back. Okay, let's see what happens here. We check it back. And now he's betting into us. So now, what do we do? Hey, the three couldn't have improved him. So maybe he has a 10. Now he's feeling comfortable with his 10? So I think now I just shove. Yeah, that was a play. He had a 10. Okay, interesting, interesting, interesting. That was an interesting hand, um, because I would have played that totally different. And now, so when I'm playing in a tournament, I'm going to, when I flop two pair like that, and I wonder if it has anything to do with, uh, let me just go back here. I wonder if it had anything to do with the, the flop texture here. Um, I, I don't have any blockers for the spade or the diamond draws. I don't know, I can't, I can't seem, you know. It's just. Fascinating, that was fascinating play. Alright, well, let's, uh, okay, so I mean, it's just, just weird. You check that back and then. And then here you, you shove. Huh, okay, let's go to the next one. Alright, so we're open ended here. Uh, the post-flop play was DTO raised. And I three-bet. And DTO just called. And so now we're out of position and it's on us. And if we can remember what we do here. I would say that we do. I would. Bet here or we could check. I mean, we're out of position. Let's. Yeah, again, um, this is, this is tough. I, you know, we were the pre-flop razor, so. Is betting here the correct thing or is just, um, checking back the best thing? I don't think all-in is the proper play here. Uh, so. Normally in a tournament, I, I can tell you how I'd play, I would just check. See what hap, you know, you're going to the check, check call mode here, but maybe that's not the best play, but I'm gonna check. Okay, alright, and here. Uh, I think just calling here. Is best. Okay, now we, we hit the jack. And now I think we check. And I think here. Now let's just call again. Okay, inaccuracy, the call was wrong. Okay, so let's, uh, let's go back and do this again here. Alright, so checking seemed to be okay. And then calling seemed to be okay. And then, so here. I checked again. Now maybe it's all in. I mean, you can't fold, so it has to be all in. Okay, it says good, so I don't wanna, I'm not gonna settle for good, so something we did wasn't quite right. On this hand, so let's take a look, so, alright. So I don't think checking, I think betting is better here, so let's do, let's bet. Calls. Hit the jack, think we continue to bet. Inaccuracy. Okay, let's try this again. Alright, so I think betting is better, the, so we bet, we get called. The jack comes now. Do we shove here? Let's check and see what happens. Now he bets into us. Now I think we just put it all in. Ah, there, that's the correct line. Wow, fascinating, fascinating here. Huh. So the, the action went, so. The action, this is the evaluation screen of this program, so. You can see 93% bet 3.3 is the best EV play. Uh, you can also do, uh, a check here. Uh, then checking on the turn, uh, 57%. Which is what we did and then. You know, they, uh. Let's see what happened on the turn here, so I checked it. And then he bet and then we just shoved over the top of him. Yeah, wow, pretty fascinating. Pretty fascinating. Let me see the big line look here. So they can put it in a percentage. Or you can put it in the big lines here. Okay, uh, let's go on to the next one. So that was interesting. Interesting hand, so let's go to another one. So we get, uh, king eight. On the button, um. So let's see, I. DTO, wait, where are you at? There's a button and the big blind. Alright, so I just called from the button. And DTO just, just called back or checked and so now we're off to the flop. Um, here with the check, I think I would just check this back. Oh wait, we're in position again. What do we got going on here? I don't see really anything. Too great about this, you know, we block king, queen. I think just checking back here is good. Another queen comes out. Now maybe a small bet here? Inaccuracy, okay. So hard to tell, man, you know, I mean, the last time betting in position was good, so it's, it's kinda like, why? How do we figure that out? How do we, how do we, how do we? Figure out the differences between these, the subtle differences to, to improve the post-flop play? So let's, uh, retry this here. So let's, uh, let's see, we, we, what did we do last time? We, we, we checked, let's, let's take, no, did we, did we try a small bet? Let's try a small bet here. Wow, a small bet, a tiny bet in position again. Just a tiny bet, looks like it's going to make you, so if you're playing tournaments. Like this, you know, because it wasn't a raised, wasn't a raised, uh. Raised hand. Uh, this is a double, double yada, this is DTO, uh, postflop dot DTO dot poker. Pretty good stuff, man. I, I'm enjoying this, it's, it's, it's helping, helping me out a lot, so my. What I am doing now before I jump in, cause normally I'd wake up in the morning, a cup of coffee and fire up the tournaments and, you know. Just have at it, so what I'm trying to do is improve my post-flop play and get. My brain thinking differently so that when I get into the tournaments. After doing a session, I'm going to try different things and, you know, stuff that I've learned here, like. Always doing a small bet in position seems like, well, this wasn't a raised pot, this was a, you know, a limped, limped pot, small blind. Uh, or button, small versus big blind, uh, button called and. And small, uh, big blind just, just checked, so. In, in that case, it seems like a little small bet, uh, in position in these types of pots is going to net you. Uh, some blinds, which is what the whole point of this is. Uh, me, of doing this training is to try to increase how many blinds that I'm getting, cause I, I find myself, you know, doing alright in the tournament in the early stages and then kinda getting blinded out. Uh, you know, just because I'm trying to make good hands and, and it's not always the case making good hands, just knowing the spots. Where you can pick up a few chips here and there, it's going to add up. And that's what I'm trying to do right now, so I'm glad you, you checked, you know, tuned in. Appreciate it. Seems awesome checking it out now. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Pretty cool. I say it's not, it's, the subscription is a $99 a month, but I think they have a free version as well. I'm gonna try to get affiliated with them because I'm, I'm gonna keep doing this, which pricing, I did the $99, uh. What, I don't know what they call it, the pro or whatever it is. Um, I did it for one month just to test it out and I'm really liking it and it's just something I'm gonna have to, I'll probably have to, you know, reevaluate what I have. For subscriptions and other areas of, for my poker training and, cause this one. Uh, I'm really liking it, um. Alright, so let's continue on the next hand here, so. We got, okay, so we have a, a back flush draw, jack high flush draw. Uh, so let's see what the post-flop bid, so the user raised, so I raised from the button and the. Uh, I got three-bet and I called. With jack seven suited. I. Wow, I don't think I would have called a three-bet, um, with jack seven suited, but he did. I'd have to look up the, the charts on that. But anyway, this is the position we're in. So we have the flush, the flush draw. And we get bet into. I think here we just call. And the four comes. And he checks. Okay. So that indicates he was just betting, so what, what's, let's look at his range here, possibilities of range here, so for the three-bet. Uh, sixes, sevens, you know, he's got all the pocket pairs, sixes and up. Um, interesting, you know, he might have had a, a smaller ace, that's why he's checking back here, so I think in this case, a check. Is the best play. And we hit the flush on the river, so now. We have to determine bet sizing, so this is another thing that, that I'm, I'm trying to work on because. It's also important to get your bet sizing correctly in order to pick up the extra chips that you need and a lot of times I think I'm not. When I have the best hand, I'm not getting as much value out of it as I want, so this is a good spot here for that, so. Um, you definitely don't want to check this back. It's, the pot's 28.4, so to do a half pot bet here, three-quarter pot, or we just shove it all in? I don't think shoving all in is good, we're trying to extract value if, you know. I'm assuming we have the best hand unless he's. Fallen into a higher, uh, flush draw. Maybe the thing here, um, because we're not the nut flush, uh, is to bet. I would say, my guess would be to bet 14 or, I would, and if I was playing this, I'd, I'd, I'd bet 14 right now. And, but that might not, so let's see, I, I would normally, I think, just do this. I'm a little bit, you know, less, I'm risk adverse, uh, in tournaments, so let's see what happens. I folds, okay, it says it's good, so it's not played to the maximum optimization, so let's try something different here. So when he bets here, uh, let's just call here again and let's, let's go back to the end there, uh. Checks, we're gonna check it back and we get to the flush. And let's try betting like almost a three-quarter pot bet. Inaccuracy, interesting, okay. Huh, okay, let's see, what are, what are we missing here? What are we missing? Okay, where are you gonna call? And. Uh, we check here and we pick up the flush. Is all-in the best play? No, it's still just good. Alright, so we're missing something. Let's go back. Anybody have any ideas? I, I'm thinking maybe it's a raise on the, on the, okay, calling here. Possibly. Maybe once we get checked to. On the turn. Maybe a bet is better here, so let's try a 7.1 bet. Now that's inaccurate, okay. Interesting. What is it? Maybe a raise here? Nah, I don't think a raise, can't be a raise, let's just call. Can we get checked to? What, we, we went through all of the scenarios on the other side, so it has to be something, maybe we're not betting enough here. Let's bet 15. Oh, that was it. Wow. Wow, 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 wow. Wow. Wow, that's, it's a trip, so. On the turn when he checks. The best play is to bet. Fifteen big blinds. Is it about, it's a half pot bet? So we did, um. Let's see, we checked and we called. And then when he checked the turn. That's when we, you put the big bet in. Cause you have, if he calls, you have the chances of hitting the flush draw. Maybe that's the logic behind it? Not sure. If anybody, uh. Anybody has any thoughts? I'm hoping we can get some more people in eventually. I'm gonna keep doing this, I like doing this and it's improving my play and if we can get more people in here and start conversations, it'd be great. So it seems to me that, uh. That play, I mean, doing this, you know, that play's interesting about a half pot bet in that, in that scenario gives you the best EV. 57% call, 100% call here. You can see all, some of the other evaluations, you know, like, uh. Raising is wrong. Your negative, uh, negative 0.1 EV. Um, folding is incorrect in this scenario, negative 10. And then on the, uh, turn here. Um, betting 7.1 is actually negative EV as opposed to, um. Zero EV here, making the best play. Alright, let's, let's do another one, let's keep going. Alright, so continue, ace eight, uh, so let's see what happened, was it, I, uh, DTO raised. From the high jack. And I called from the big blind. Okay, so I'm on the big blind with ace eight. Um, I definitely think. Oh, okay, we got the wheel draw. I think a check here is appropriate. And question is, do we call here? Normally I would call. Being that I have the wheel draw and the overcard to the board. So I think a call here is appropriate. Oh, it's a mistake. It's a mistake. Hmm. Maybe because it, it was such a big bet, so let's take a look here. So I check. Uh, half pot bet, maybe it's because it's a half pot bet? Um. Maybe raising in this place, in this position's better? Check raise, no, that's inaccuracy as well, so let's retry. So maybe it's just a fold, but I don't, dude, I, I just. See how you fold this. I don't think all-in is the right play. So is a fold the right play? Wow, wow, you fold in that spot. Wow. Wow, why? Why do you fold? I mean, you have the wheel draw and you have an overcard to the board. So the flop. I checked. Can also bet here, 26% of the time. So it's about, you could do either way, you could check or you could bet. So you don't lose any EV. On the flop, um, but here. The, wow, there's nothing, nothing better. Folding is the best play in this scenario. Okay. Interesting. Alright, let's go to another one. I still don't know why you would fold with the. With the overcard. And a wheel draw. Why, 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 why? Huh. That's. Interesting. I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answers to that, so. Alright, let's, uh, continue. So we get, uh, five, six, seven, eight, we're open-ended. Get the king and see, how did the post-flop play go? So DTO raised from the low jack, I'm on the small blind and I call with king five. Okay. So open-ended, I think a check back is appropriate here. And there's a bet, so I think we call. And interesting. So I would check it back if I was playing normal. And we get a check. Okay. Interesting spot, so, cause the big blind has all of this, you know, I have all of these cards in my range here. I have the, I have the flush blocker, um. You know, he most likely has a ace here, so. Most likely, uh, if I check back. I would, I would lose the hand. So my thinking here is maybe it's best, normally I would just check this back. So I, I'm just gonna check it back. Um, but my, um, indication is, is that we should, we should bet here. Um, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just stick to what I would normally do and try to, and then adjust and try to learn from what, what. So I would normally check, cause we have king high. Oh, okay, that was the best way to play it. Uh, and he did have an ace, so, um, let's take a look at the valuation here. So you, on the river, uh, you could, not, not, do, doing any of this was all negative EV. So checking back was the correct play. And I was correct in, in assuming that he, he did have the ace there. High probability that he had an ace. Uh, what do you have, ace 10? So, uh, the question is, uh, you know. It's, this is like, I think, like a GTO type thing, but. Could you get him to fold an ace? Cause I kinda put him on an ace, so it's kind of interesting what I. You know, could I have gotten him to fold an ace? It would have been negative EV to do that, but. A lot of times, if you get kind of a feeling, it seems like you should maybe try it, but in this case it would have been just checking back is the best play, so. Alright, I'm going to, guys, I, I gotta get my dog here real quick, so if you'll give me a second, I'll be right back. Stay with me, man. Oh, break is. There we go. Alright, here we go. Shove over the top. Queens, oh my god, seriously? What? What the hell? Oh my god, shit. Fuck dude, that's so fricking ridiculously bad. Well, it might be a short stream. Yeah, here we go, queen, jack, ace, king. Eight, nine, 10, uh, is a jack missing, I gotta get a jack, man, shit. That's it, that's it, guys, that's it, it's a bummer. Well. Yeah. Gotta go with this. Just hope he doesn't have a big ace, ah, shit. Come on, give me a six, oh, we almost. Oh, we got the straight, oh fuck, we got the flush, shit. Ah, fuck. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna be eating. If I do this, so. Okay, let's go on to the next one. Queen six post flop or pre flop play was, uh. Was, let's see. I raised from the button. And. DTO three bet me and I called. Um. And he checks. But I think just checking back here is good, so we'll check. And then we pick up the flush draw and he checks again. So, okay, so we're open ended now and we have a flush draw, I think betting here, 7.9. Uh, maybe 15. We get called. Uh. And we don't get there. So now what do we do? Wow. Tough spot here. Just check back. Hmm. We missed. So do we check back? Could he been on a flush draw there, I mean, why would he call it 15 big blind? And when he called that 15 big blind there. Um. It was a pretty good hefty sized bet. Hmm. We have a blocker to straight, but. 10, 8 gets there, but he wouldn't, he wouldn't have, uh. He wouldn't have, uh, three bet with 10, 8, I don't think. An over pair to the board. Hmm. I think the best EV, um, my guess here, normally in a tournament, I would just check and give up. Um, at this point. And I'm sure that that's probably not the best play, but I'm just gonna check in, I'm gonna run it or play it like I would play it like I'm in a tournament, I would just give up here. And I'm sure this is wrong and this is what I'm trying to improve. Okay, so it was inaccurate, which is normally how I'd play in a tournament, I would just. So let's retry. This is why I'm doing this, I'm trying to learn here. So. I check it back. He checks again and that's when I bet big. And get called. I don't think all in is the right play. I think betting 26 is the only real option, so. Oh, wow, inaccurate, huh? Okay. So shoving in this spot is going to be. Why? I'm gonna check it back. Weird. Then we bet, we get called. And we go all in. Okay, that's only good. Our goal here is to get it to excellent. We're gonna keep retrying. So instead checking back here, cause we have the backdoor, flush the backdoor straight, we have one overcard, maybe it's best to bet here. Okay. Now. We pick up additional equity, excuse me, I have a phone call, be right back. Oh, sorry, sorry about that, my mom just called, I'll have to call her a little bit later. Alright, so we, we, uh, we bet, so we're trying to find the best line of play here, the best, uh, GTO or best, uh. Plus EV, what, what happened to the music, oh, shoot. Hold on, I just gotta change my battery here. So we're trying to find the best EV line in these types of spots, so. So let's see, what do we do, I forgot now. I bet 6.6, he called, I think now, cause we picked up additional equity, we could, we continue betting. And I'm not sure of the bet sizing though here. If we go like kind of a 11.9 seems a little bit small maybe, I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for a bigger's bet size. We get called again. Alright, well, this point, I think we just need to go all in. Ugh, we get called. Okay, he had a 10, jack 10, okay, so that's not the best line there. It was good, but not the best line and we got stacked off out of the tournament, so let's, let's see what. Differently we could do, and even though we're gonna end up losing the hand, is there something that we can play different that gives us better EV? Checks. What did we do last time, did we bet big on this? No, I don't think betting big is, is the best line. Well, we bet small. If anybody has any input, what do you think the best line is? Uh, maybe just shoving here. No, that's inaccurate, okay. Okay, bet. No, but we bet big. Alright, and again, that, that's, it just comes down to that, we're not. Okay, we're just getting good, what we want is excellent, we need to find the correct line here for this hand. Maybe. We tried this, try this, maybe just check back. Maybe check back again. And now just folding is the best way. And that's good, okay, we're still not getting there, must be two small bets in a row, okay, let's try that. Cause we're not finding the best line. So. Think, I think just checking back is, is probably good here. Then maybe a small bet. No, that's inaccurate, okay. Alright, so checking, checking seems to be, let's see, let's see, we do check. We check again. Any bets? No reason to call here, right? Oh, no, yeah, there's no reason to call, we got nothing, so, the hell. Maybe now shove? I don't even think, I don't think shoving is good here. No, that's inaccurate, so what the hell, how can we get to the best line here? Alright, let's try your theory, uh, double, double yada, two small bets. No, that's inaccurate as well. Hmm. What's the deal here? What is the best line? Um, surely it's not all in, that doesn't make any sense. Betting, maybe we check the turn? No, checking the turn is inaccurate, ah, damn. Haha, what the heck, man? Okay. So I. I'm just gonna do a check, check and. And. Call? Is that the best line? You call a queen high? No, it's a blender, okay, where the hell, man, what's the deal, this is, this is what I love about this program, cause it's like, man, what is the best fricking line here with this? Alright, so maybe betting big? Did we try this already, oh, that's a different reaction. Okay, 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 I think this is the best line right here. Okay. Okay, alright. We bet big, he shoved, now I think the proper thing to do is to fold. Ah, isn't that wild, wow, 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 wow. Wow. That is some really cool stuff right there. That is totally fascinating. It's so interesting because every time I'm playing this GTO, it reminds me of a guy that I play with at our local tournaments. He does a lot of weird stuff like this and. Just really a good player and I just. Gosh, and I sometimes wonder, you know, cause they've been playing, these guys that I play with, the local, uh, they've been playing for 20, 30 years, you know. And, uh, yeah, it's interesting to see stuff like this, so the best EV on this thing is a big, like, three quarter pot healthy bet. On the button, which is, just blows my mind, man, like. Just because what? Queen six? You're, so apparently. You're trying to rep a 10. That's what it is. What is the size of that on the flop? What, what is that size on flop pot, uh, let's see, take a look. So it's, it's, the, the pot is 26.48 big blinds. And the, uh, you, you bet like a three quarter pot, let me see if I can do percentage, that's 60%, 60%, um, or 78%. No, the bet is 60%, I don't know what the 78% means. I know, isn't that strange, I mean, I would never do that either and that's the thing, it's like. Wow, that's the best EV line is to do, so, so my thinking here, and this is the reason, this is where we have, this is where, like, why it's so important, I think, to do this stuff is because. Now you have to try to figure out, why would you do that? And my thinking is, is you're trying to rep the 10, because if you look at your range from the button. You have a lot of 10s. You have ace 10, king 10, queen 10, jack 10. Pocket, pocket 10s, uh, you have, you know, the suited 10s as well, you have all the 10s. You have all the 10s in this range, so, so when you, when you're on the button, cause it went, uh. Because yes, this makes sense, because the big line three bet, right, didn't they? So DTO, uh, what happened, what happened pre flop, oh, it doesn't show here. But I think the, the play went, I raised and I raised from the button and then, um. DTO three bet me, so when you, when the three bet from the big blind versus the button, I think that's the way it went. Or was that just a call, that looks like a calling range to me. Or was it a three bet? Let's go back and take a look at that, so, so, uh. Let's just go back here. So it went. Uh, I, I raised from the button and DTO three bet me. Okay, he three bet me. So I think what this is, is some kind of range bet here, repping that you have the 10. Um. With this big bet. And then you fold. Uh, I think that's what. That's why it's the play here, is because you ra, the button raised, so I raised, you know, the button. Big blind three bets, so his, the, the big blinds range is totally different. So you're trying to, I think what this bet sizing is saying, I have the 10, go away. You know, if you don't have anything bigger than that, you're, you know, fold and. And, and, and they ended up having a 10 as well, so. Um, that's why they shoved all in, so you're repping the 10 here, I think that's what it is. I think that's all it was, was because it's the 10s in your range versus a three bet, is you have a lot of 10s. In that range, ah, it's, it's, it's tough, I, I, can you think of anything double yada? I, I, I can't think of anything else to explain it, um. To explain why that size bet on the button. It must have to do, it really must have to do with this board texture here as well. If you're repping the 10, if you're repping that you have a 10, you're worried about the flush draw and you want to put a big bet. To rep that you have the 10 and you're saying, you know, I'm protecting against, against a flush draw. That's the only thing that I can figure out and you're hopefully, you know, you're putting your opponent on, um, say like ace, king, ace, queen. Uh, you know, maybe, maybe a low pocket pair, let's see, I mean, so they're three betting here, sevens, eights, nines, so you're hoping that they have something like that. Yeah, I can't think of anything else either, yeah, so I'm, uh. I wonder if we can look. So we could do, can look, uh. Well, the, the idea here, uh, double yada is to, uh, is to, is to go through this process. So that when it pops up in the game, you're like, oh. You know, when you're playing, it pops up in your, your play, you'd be like, oh, wait a minute, I remember this spot. This is how you play that spot, you know, uh, the best line here on this type of board. So I don't even think it matters what two cards you got, I think it's just this right here, I think what matters is just this flop texture. It's a 10 high flop. And he, and the big blind three bet. Which I think, you know, gives him possibility of having 10s, less 10s than. Uh, since you would have more 10s because you raised, you got three bet. Um, but yeah, it's definitely interesting, I, you know, I don't know. I do not know, but yeah, alright, let's move on to the next one. Pocket nines, so let's see, uh, I'm on the low jack, I raise. I get three bet by DTO and I call with pocket nines. And what happens here, it's on me. So I think I would check to the pre flop razor. So I think I would check to the pre-flop raiser here. Check back. In this case, I think, you know, if I was playing a tournament, I would just check it back, cause. That falls in his range, that king is in his range, he's the pre-flop raiser. And he checks again. Interesting, I think you just want to get these to showdown. I'm gonna check. No, inaccurate, inaccurate, okay, alright, um. Okay, let's try this again, I'm gonna keep checking. And a check. And maybe a small bet? Say, I, I don't know. I think there's a problem with our post-flop, our, the turn, maybe we should have bet on the turn. So let's see here, let's, uh, bet. And we get raised, and I think now we just fold. So maybe that's the best line there. That's good, it's not excellent, it's good. Your line is the line I would have taken too, yeah. Okay. Alright, so let's try this again, so. Uh, we check. Now let's try giving it a bet. It's a blunder, alright, so that's a blunder, cause that's in their range, that makes sense. Alright, so we check, so I think checking here in both cases is the proper play, check, check. Unless that jack-high flop right there. Has something to do with it, just jacking a little 7-3. Maybe that's more in the caller range, and maybe you're supposed to bet on the, on the flop. Alright, so here, uh, what did we, checking was, was not right. Wait, what, what did I, I can't even remember what I did here, cause I think we tried to bet. And then we got raised. So what do we, what are we doing here? So. Cause we, we did fold and it was wrong, right? I know it was good, we're trying to get to the best line here, what if we, what if we, uh, what if we did this? No, that's inaccurate, alright, so maybe, maybe, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, uh. Because of this flop here, he did, he was a three-better. But maybe a donk bet in this case. Sometimes donks are okay. Uh, let me just try something, and let me just try this 4.6, because of the, no, that's inaccurate, okay, so that's not right, so checking is correct here. So we check, so which line is the best line? What if? Oh wow, is that a different? He didn't bet the last time, wow, this thing changes up, huh? Weird. Okay. We call. Check. Now, now I know I think we fold. No, that's a mistake. Oh boy, this is a frustrating one. So this shows how hard it is to play pocket nines. So let's check. Let's raise him. Let's raise him. He called. Okay. Now I think we just check. And. Interesting. Fold. Nope, that's a mistake as well, what the heck? Okay, what is the best line with this? So we decided that checking was right? What about just shoving here? No, that's inaccurate, uh. Huh. Okay, check. Call. Check. What about just folding right here? Did I try that? I'm getting confused with what I was trying, I just, I would normally just fold here, that's a mistake. Let's just look at the evaluation, I can't, I can't figure this one out. Alright, so the best was check. Uh, so if we take this line, we check. And then DTO bets, and. User. We checked. So in this case, betting 10.6 was the better line. We did try betting the flop. Yep. Yeah, we did, yeah, we tried all of these, I think, so checking is the best line here. And then, once we get here, uh, we check, and DTO bets. So better is to raise here. Alright. Uh, this combo stuff I haven't quite figured out. Where, how this, how I can use this as well. So you can click and look at combos, please select the hand from the range to show frequencies for specific combos. So I guess it's what, king-jack, how many combos of king-jack there are? There's three combos of king-jack. Four combos of, uh. And I'm not sure if this means he has a 34% chance of having that? We are representing king-jack, okay, okay, I got you, okay. Oh, right, 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 so we're representing king-jack. Interesting, this, okay. Or what about ace-jack too, you got, you got. You know, I don't know what the percentage means here. Uh. So there's three combos of ace-jack. Three combos of king-jack, queen-jack, there's three more combos. And let's see what this absolute does. I don't know what. Not sure what that even means here, I'll have to read up on this. Um. Oh, okay. That's who you bet, what if we do this? I don't know what this is either. Huh. Okay. Alright, I'm not sure how to use this portion of it yet, I understand combos. But I'm just having a little. And we also got ace-jack here, oh, I look at all the combos of ace-jack we have. Hmm, okay, well, have to, alright, so. Uh, at this point, doing 72%, and then, um. 72% was. Oh, oh, 72%, what? Okay. So raising here, I wonder if I can get back to the hand at this point? From this position, alright, let's go back, so we're gonna do a check. And. User checks, and then he bets. Instead of calling, we're gonna raise here, and then see if what happens here on the, on the next one. Alright, so let's go back, we're gonna. We try fix, so this line is a check here. And then we're gonna raise. 10-6. Of course, we get called. And. Now. So since we raised, is the best line just to shove all in? Or is it a check? That's a mistake, okay? Okay, so we did the check, we did the raise here, we check-raised, or we raised him, yeah, we check-raised him on the turn. Right? We checked, they raised, we, we raised him up. And then, so the best thing is not all in. It is just a check, okay, so let's go back, we're just gonna play this out here. So we checked. And we raised him. And then, on the turn, the best play is to check. Just makes sense now, and I think now. You just fold. And that should give us the excellent. Yeah. Interesting, okay, so, so that line is, is quite interesting, so you, 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 you're trying to figure out where you're at in the hand, I think. Would be the logical thinking behind this. Um. So let's, let's see here. Uh, we'll retry the, we'll show, just so we can see it again, so. You have pocket nines here, and you're trying to figure out, so this is what I think, and, and, and double yada, if you got any ideas, um. So what, what's the deal here? You're trying to figure out where you're at with your nines, right? So, uh, you check. And you, you raise. Check-raise, so you can try to figure out where you're at. And you get called, so now you're like, okay, my nines are not good. It's like, I'm gonna check and give up at this point, right? So you check. And then you just fold. And that's the best way to play it. So it, so it would seem like in these spots, you, you have to find out. What's going on with your nines, are your nines good? And obviously, they weren't when you get called, so you're, they're not good, so you can just. Plan on your next couple streets, is to check and give up unless you catch a nine. Unless you, you know, get lucky and catch a nine, so, eh, interesting, okay. Alright, let's continue with another one. So we got, uh. Pre-flop action was, uh. Was, uh. We, what do we do? We're in the small blind, we just checked, and the big blind. Just called, or checked behind, so. Um. We have backdoor flush draw. And. Some straight possibilities, maybe? So I think I would check here if I was normally playing this. But again, in this position, yeah, I. I think I would just check. Now, I think maybe a call here? And so now. Would have been better, I think, if this was a spade, uh, but we do end up with, we do end up having a gut shot. Um, and I think we just check again. And now I think we just have to give up? Okay, perfect, we got that one, we can give ourselves the win on that one. Cool. Alright, let's continue. We got king-10, and pre-flop action was DTO raised. And what happened here? Raised from the button, and I just call, okay, I'm in the big blind, alright. So, uh, I would check. And I think here. Well, you got two overcards, right? Do you call? 1.2, do you raise here? You have some backdoor straight possibilities with two overcards? I don't know, I think I would call here. If I was playing in the tournament, I'd just call, it's just cheap enough, right? Now you've got, you know. Uh, open-ended. Um. We just check again, or maybe we could bet here on the queen? Not sure, but if we think about the queen. So he raised. And we just called. Hey, entim- en. Intimidator, intimidator. Ha, intimidator, is that how you say it? Hey guys, how's it going, he says? Um, yeah, we're just hanging out and trying to, uh, improve my post-flop play with, using the, uh, post-flop DTO trainer. And so we're just kinda hanging and, and trying, and going over some hands, and hoping some more people come in and join us, and. Um. Give us some input, and kinda share and work together to try to get better at post-flop play. Uh, and I'm gonna start doing this before all of my sessions, before I start playing in the tournament sessions, um, just to try to. You know, get some ideas, and some. Uh. Get some ideas and some new thoughts into my head, so that when I go into the tournament playing, and maybe a, a spot will come up that's very similar, and I'll be like, oh wow, what? Just went over that, and then that way it can, uh, it'll be making an impression, a double impression on your brain, and then. Hopefully when that spot occurs over and over again, you've got it. The patterns laid in, and as you build those patterns. Uh. Improve the post-flop play, so you just, like, you see it, you know what to do, you know what you're doing. In those spots, and that's the purpose of this, it's just basically training pattern recognition, um, and understanding these spots, so that's why I'm doing it, so. What do we do here? We checked, we checked, uh, the big blind, and the, what happened? Um. Uh, the big blind, and we said, check, check, and now we're on the turn, okay, so now. Oh, no, no. Uh, the button, I checked, and the button bet, and I called, and this is where we're at, so we're open-ended now. So the question is, what do you do here? I would, if I was playing in a tournament, I would just check. Okay, and we do not get there. And I think I, I would just check back, hoping my king is good, and. I just, you know, but I doubt it's good, okay, so that's a mistake, see? Alright, so. Hi-yai-yai-yai-yai-yai, what do we do here? Alright. So, I'm gonna start with check again, if you guys have any ideas, let me know. Entimeter, if you have any input on this, if you do a different line, just let us know. So I would normally call here, so I'm just gonna call. And maybe, maybe calling, well, calling seems okay, I guess. But I don't know, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to find the, the best, the best line here, post-flop. Um, so here, oh, maybe because we're open-ended here on the queen, we can bet and rep the queen, because we also have an open-ended, uh, straight draw? So maybe we could rep the queen here? No, inaccuracy, alright, let's try this again. Let's try this again, so I check. I call. Maybe it's the bet sizing. If I rep the queen here with a small bet. Nope, that's a mistake as well, okay. Interesting. We check. We call, queen comes. It can't be all in. I, I just, that seems totally unrealistic, I'll, I'll test it, but I don't think that's it, I think check is the best play here, so. Yeah, that's a mistake, okay, so. So check is going to be the best play here, so. We check. And we call. And. We check. And so the best play though is not to check, this is where we're at, is not to check. So now it's, we have to figure out what the, what the best decision to make is. Here. So, but what bet sizing? I, I think, bet pot, okay, uh, 8.4, alright? Okay, that works, that's good, but that's not the best line, so what we're trying to do is find the best line. So let's see, uh. Let's retry it. So I think our, our thinking is, is good up until that point, so. We check. We call. Um. We check again, isn't that what we did? Okay, now, so we tried pot, what about a half-pot bet here? No, inaccuracy. Okay, let's try this again. Check. And call. And check. And. So pot was good, maybe it is just a shove here? No, what is the best line? Okay, maybe you're, okay, double yada, your pot bet is good, but we have to do something different pre-flop. I mean, uh, post-flop, like on the, on the, on the turn or something. So let's see. Let's see if we can figure this out. Um. Okay, so I, I think checking is the best, best option here. And I think. May, what if we do a raise here? Oh, ooh, ooh, interesting, we don't even have to play it down to the, down to the river. We don't even have to play it to the river. We just do a check-raise. Now, wha- the question is, why is this the best line? That's the question. Why is? Oh, I didn't, I didn't go to the, the, why is? Checking, a check-raise here the best line? So let's take a look at this. We block jack-10, we block king-jack. It's a very dry board. And DTO raised, and we called. So I, my, my thinking is a check-raise here is because we block jack-10, I mean, does this, is, is this thinking logical, guys? I mean, you know, I'm. Just, I have no idea, you know, I mean, just trying to think of it, we block jack-10, we block king-jack. Uh, we don't block ace-jack, but, uh, so he could, you know, he could wake up with that, but it, it. WI, uh, check-raising here seems crazy to me, I don't understand, yeah, I, I, that's, that's the reason why I am doing this stuff. Cause I'm trying to figure out, you know, why, so let's, we go through the thought process. Um, my thinking is, is you check-raise here to figure out where you're at. I mean, you know, you can, you're, or not to figure out where you're at, but you're kind of repping that you have the jack. So. Let's see. Especially with 17 big blinds, right? I mean, you, you think in a tournament, you're like, oh no, man, I, you know, you don't want to check-raise here, but, but. I mean, you, you think in a tournament, you're like, oh, no, man, I, you know, you don't wanna check-raise here, but, but But it's the best EV? This is so strange? So, my thinking is because you block jack-ten, you block king-ten, the ranges? Huh? I, I don't know? What do we have as a calling range? We have more tens, I guess? We have more tens? Not tens, but jacks, we're looking at for jacks, so we have more? More jacks, is that, is that, is that the deal here? In our calling range, we have more jacks versus his raising range? It's very odd, man, it's very odd, it's definitely interesting to know that this is a check-raise here? So check-raise? Is the correct play? Um Uh, the only reason I can think? Oh, or let's, let's take, let me just finish, so we do the check-raise? And, we get this, so we can go to the evaluation here, so? Alright, so? Check, so in this position, so, uh, twenty-eight percent raise? A call is also twenty-eight percent, so calling is just as good as Raising here, or, or, or calling? So I'm not really sure either, why that, that gives it the excellent line, this is the, the best line, is to check-raise? In this spot? Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know, if anybody got input on that? Not sure why, uh? I mean, it, it gives good here, unless there's a way? Maybe it's just a balance thing, yeah, it could possibly be that, it could possibly be that? Um, I'm just wondering, if we go back, can we do the, the check here? Cause that is similar here, if we check, we should, we try, hopefully, we could try to figure out? Because the, the, the most, the, you know, checking or, or calling the one-point-two is what I would've done as well? So I'm just wondering if we can, if there is an excellent EV? You know, difference by going that other route? So if we do? If we do a check? And then we do a call? And then? We do a check? And then we do a check again? So that's a mistake there, but let's look at the evaluation here, cause what I'm trying to get to? Is we check, call? Uh, cause that was just similar EV to, to check-raising? And then? Um Definitely checking on the turn is correct? But here, on the river? Uh, after the check-back, on the river? Or on the turn, and check-back in the river? Betting eight-point-four? So let's go back and, and hit that, so we're gonna do? Check, call, check, and then we're gonna bet the river for eight-point-four, and see if that gives us an excellent rating as well? So? Um Check? Call? Oh, wait? What'd I do? Did I mess that up? Yeah, we called, okay, we're gonna check? And then, eight-point-four, which is a pot bet? Which is? Which is what? Who said that? Did somebody say pot-bet on the river, so we're there now? So we do a pot-bet? And they fold, okay? Alright, so that line? If you go this line, you can't? Yeah, we tried the pot-bet before, but the pot-bet is good, right, but, so it's? It's weird, so? It's better to do the check-raise, which? I don't know, I can't figure it out, you know, a balance thing? So yeah, so we, we, we did this line, and we got, yeah, that's, it's not excellent, it's good? It's good? Maybe it's because it's more, a little bit more riskier to check-call, and get down to the river? You can just finish it off right there? By representing? So we tried the pot-bet, but it is still forty-nine, fifty, so only one point off? Yeah, I think you're right, it's, it's very, you know, the points are, yeah? Exactly, alright, let's go on to the next one? Okay, but it is something to consider, right? I mean, you, you block, you block, uh? You block king, uh, uh, ten-jack and king-jack, maybe that's the reason they're check-raising in that spot? Or maybe that's the reason why you can, you know, in those spots, so we'll have to just wait, I mean, the more of these I see, you know, hopefully, the pattern recognition will Will start to recognize a pattern of when, when we're doing it? Okay, so we got, uh? Let's see? What? Preflop, we had, uh, DTO raised from the high-jack, and we just called with ace-queen suited, which makes sense? Ace-queen off, probably, we'd probably just, uh, raise there? Or jam? I don't know, forty-three big blinds, a little, little, little big to jam? Alright, so, it, we get checked, and I think in this case, we just check it back? Although, I mean, that's what I would do, I would just check back? And, there's a raise, so? I think we would call here? And then I think we would check, and hope that our ace is good? And I'm not sure that's the correct play? But, let's see? It's good, it's good, but it's not? It's not a hundred percent? So let's see here? So let's see, I'm thinking something on the turn, so we, we, we check? Or maybe it would be better to bet there? Um And we call? And now, maybe it's better to? Yeah, what can you, you know, what are you repping here if we bet? Cause he checked? Let's just try a bet, I don't think that's right, yeah, okay? So, let's see, we're trying to find the Best line here? Maybe right here, when they check to us, we bet? Little small bet? That's it, that's it, little tiny bet? That way you, you avoid getting into? Cause it, you know, five, six, seven, right? I mean, they're raising preflop? How, how, how much of the five, six, seven do they have? Right, I mean, you got eight, seven? So it's, they have very little of that, and our calling range gives us more of Those cards that are there? Cause we're calling with all, like, you know? Eight, six, seven, eight, seven, nine, seven, whatever, I mean? I don't know, I have to look at the ranges, um? Let's look at the evaluation here? So, let's look at our calling range here, so? You can see, okay, so they have a lot of this as well, those cards? But, let's see what? We have in our range, we're calling? So we have a lot of those cards as well, those, uh, smaller, you know, suited connectors here? But? I don't know, it's kinda interesting, um, I think small bets in position are definitely showing up as a pattern? So let's go on to the next one? Uh, ace-jack suited? And let's see, how did it go? DTO, uh? Low-jack raised, and we called from the small blind? So definitely, I think a check? Okay, and he checked there, so? At this point, so sometimes here, I think it would be good to take a stab? Because the two didn't really change anything, in my opinion? So, I'm, I'm thinking? I'm thinking, what if we try a small bet here? No, inaccuracy, okay, uh, alright? So we check, I think that's the correct play? So I think, okay, so we just check it back, probably? Okay, I, I think we just check this down, we have, we have equity here, we have showdown equity with the ace? Excellent, okay? So we beat him, he had ace-nine, okay? So in that, the lesson on that one is you have an ace, you have, you have showdown? Equity? In that particular case? Just gonna take a vape break here for a second? I don't know if this works in this break room or not? And? Uh, give me a second? What? Soft? Alright, so? Okay, yeah, we got some people in here, so let's, uh, let's continue here? I don't know Most of you know, but I, uh, own three vape stores? Uh, two in Vermont, one in New Hampshire, so I am a, I am a vapor? And I just don't like doing it on stream, it just? It's loud, makes a noise, so? But, just so you know, that's occasionally, I gotta take a vape break? Okay, um? Alright, so, here, what happened? DTO raised from the button, and we called, which makes sense, so? Now, we've got, you know, backdoor flush going on, okay, we blocked nine-ten, we blocked jack-ten? We have? Like I said, the, the spades, we got one spade here, what else we got going on? Anything else going on? What do we got, what do we got? Um, I think that's about it, so I think just checking here is good? And I think, I think definitely? Now, could this be a spot where we check-raise? This is similar? Isn't this similar to what we saw before? We have a spade blocker? We block jack-ten, we block nine-ten, I think it's, I think we try a check-raise here? Okay, we get called, alright, now we hit the jack? So now I think? We just put it all in? Excellent, cool, right on, man, so that, we just, okay? So we learned something, man, we learned something? Yeah, we learned something, didn't we? Didn't we learn something there, guys? That was a pattern, I think, very similar to the other one that we just did, where we had, we had the blockers there? Um So I think, you know, that worked out pretty well, so? Guys, um, I'm gonna wrap this up, and, uh, I'm gonna go start my tournament grind? Um, so the way I've been working it now is I just start my tournament grind, and if I get, if I get deep? Wow, wow, yeah? So, uh, if I get deep in some tournaments, I am not check-raising enough? Exactly, exactly, so that's, that's what it's, it's It's teaching us, it's teaching us, so the pattern recognition there, because? In that case, so let's go back to that, since, since you mentioned that, so? Uh, so in this case here? We? I think the check-raises are good? In this spot? Because it's a small bet? And if it's bigger, I, I, if this bet's bigger, I don't think you check-raise in this spot? Um But since it's a small bet, and you block nine-ten, and jack-ten, you can rep it? So, um, cause you have some blockers? And? You have an overcard to the board? And you also have a backdoor flush draw? So if you get called? And you hit? Your, the jack, or you hit a spade, you can? Barrel it a third time, I think? This is what's happening here? Hey? D-Cheney03, wow, you subscribed, wow? Thank you for the subscription, hold on, we need a, let's see if I can, if that works? Uh, so, let's see here, uh? Oh, no, it doesn't work here, in, in the, in the study room, normally, I can get a big zoom, but thank you for the subscription, D-Cheney, I appreciate it very much? That's, that's great, I appreciate it? Um? And? Well, I'm, I was just about to wrap this up, cause I'm, I'm kinda, I'm getting kinda like, you know, I wanna jump in some tournaments here and, and get going, and, um? And, and play a little bit? Uh? Uh, it was a prime, um, I, uh? It was? Just says you subscribe, I don't know if I can tell if it was a prime or not? And I don't even really know what the prime means, to be honest with you? I don't know if you guys have any feedback on that? Um? Been lurking and accidentally pressed my button on my phone? Okay, well, I appreciate it? Thank you? Um, alright, so, um, I wanna, uh, I wanna wrap this up, uh, and I plan on doing this, um? I think, I think every day, I'm just gonna do, I'm just gonna be doing this, uh? I don't know about if I'm gonna stream it every day, if, if I feel like it, come online, but I'm gonna, I think? Uh, I, I do enjoy just sitting here and hanging out with you guys, Amazon Prime gives you one free sub per month to a Twitch streamer? Okay, well, um? I appreciate, I appreciate that, uh? And so, actually, I'll probably just, you know, I, I, I'm actually liking this, just firing it up and, and streaming when we're, uh, I don't have a delay? Um, and it's kinda cool, so what I'll do, this is the plan here, I'm gonna keep doing this? Um? Okay, good, oh, in chat? Uh, did it say that? It doesn't say in my chat, but, uh, it just says? Oh, yeah? No, wait, I don't think it did say that, it said, did it say? D-Cheney subscribed, oh, with prime, yeah, 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 you did prime, you got the prime one, thank you so much for the subscription, I appreciate it? Um, it'll help us get more emotes if we get more subscribers, so I, I, I like doing this, cause I like, so I might be doing this? A lot, more, more regularly, just this study session? Um? And then? The plan is like, okay, I do this, and I get some ideas in my head, then I'm gonna play the tournaments, and then if I run deep, I'll come live later? Yeah, I'll come live later? Um, so, you know, if I, if I have a good run, and I get deep in the tournaments, I usually, then I'll pop on, because I like to do? I don't like doing those long, long, grueling streams, and it's just, it's just a lot of work, you know, I, I don't mind it if I'm running deep, and I'm, and I'm getting a return on investment for it? Uh, you know, like a final? Uh, nice learning check-raising with blockers on the flop, oh, cool, right on? Nice run last night, bro, yeah, thanks, thanks, uh, DC-Cheney, appreciate it? Uh, it did feel good to, uh, run, that's the second one I've, uh, I finished second in a similar tournament, uh, a couple of weeks ago, a week and a half ago? Um, and, uh? And, you know, that's my second big, I mean, the, it's not my highest all-time cash, but, uh, it was close? Um, so I, I, I think this DTO trainer's helping, cause it was really weird, uh, you know, when I went into the, the tournament, um? It does something, it does something, I think these drills are great, if you guys pick this up, it's postflop.dto.poker? Um? You know, the cost is ninety-nine bucks a month, but I'm gonna come on and just stream and, uh? And do these sessions, so I appreciate you guys hanging out, and, uh, I'm gonna start grinding some tournaments here, and, and see what happens, if, if I get deep? I'll, I'll fire up the stream again? With a delay at that time? Uh, thanks for tuning in, guys, appreciate it? Thanks, thanks a lot, appreciate it?